All questions, the candidates will receive any questions that we didn't have a chance to ask tonight via email. And have an opportunity to provide direct responses if they choose to accept it. So, thank you all for being here, and for caring about public education enough to come and find out from the candidates directly where they stand on the issue of reporting to you, and to make an educated decision on August 2nd. So, I'm going to hand the mic over to the candidates.
And I'll take a moment of personal privilege, I hope you can hear me. My name is Edna Varner, Dr. Edna Varner. And I am president of Unified Ed. And I can tell you in a sentence, Unified Ed is about having the conversations we need to have. And I have great faith in us, that we can have those conversations. There are those who want to invite us to make some heroes and some villains, just to shut down the conversation. But everybody can be a hero for great public schools. For our debate tonight, we have two ladies who care deeply about public schools. This is an opportunity to hear both of them talk about the issues. In August, we will select one to sit in the school board chair. But I have no doubt that the other will be just as relentless in her support for great public schools. And she will be there, and I hope all of us will be there too, just as relentless as ever in ensuring that every child in this district gets to go to a great school with great teachers and great resources. This is the day after a holiday, and a rainy day, and look at you. I've been to three, I think of the five, and what a great turnout. So, thank you for that, and we will begin with the questions. There are five questions that are asked at each debate, so I will ask those questions. And then we invite the audience to send your questions, so that the candidates will have an opportunity to answer those. So, with that, let's begin what is likely to be a great evening. And thank you again for being here. As the moderator, the first thing I'm going to ask each candidate to do, Mrs. Mobley Jones and Mrs. Pierre, is to tell us a little about you, and I know we probably know them, but tell us a little about you. And what inspired you to run for school board District 5? So, we'll start with you.
I'm going to stand up. Mic went out. Can y'all hear me?
It's supposed to be... I'll work on it.
Um, my name is Coritza Mobley Jones, and I am your current District 5 school board member. I started on this journey about four years ago in 2014 with the desire to want to make a change and improve the educational conditions for our kids here in District 5. And for the last four years, I have done that. I've fought, I've advocated, I've been accessible, and I've been accountable to my peers, to the schools, to the students, to the constituents, to all of you, and to myself, as well as to those whose futures are in my hands. I worked very hard and very diligent to do that, and oftentimes that wasn't easy. Standing alone sometimes in efforts to make sure that our kids have what they need. And then advocating, I not only advocated for what our kids need in District 5, but I advocated for what was best for every child here in Hamilton County. Because in doing that, I would ensure that the kids here in District 5 got what they needed. Um, I, at that time, wanted to be accountable, accessible, and an advocate. And I still want to be your AAA board member in the upcoming election in August of 2018. But this time, I want to be your AAA board member, and I want us all to work together, continue to work together to move in action. And that's with accountability, that's with communication, and that's with transparency. So, I ask that you all remember what I've done, that my work speaks for itself, and know that my passion is for the kids here in District 5. And remember my name, Coritza Mobley Jones, on August the 2nd.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. My name is Anne Pierre, and I have been in this community for a number of years, working. I'm a graduate of Howard High School, TSU. When you enter an education setting and you decide what you're going to do, then you pursue that. I realized that the children that we have now are facing a great deal of problems in their school system. We look at our different schools, and it's hard for me to understand, and I could not really understand that completely when I had grandkids at CSLA and CSAS. I couldn't understand why those schools, people would sit on the lawns to get into the school. But the other schools, nobody wanted to go to them. After looking at that, and then looking at some of the other children in my family, I decided that I wanted to run for school board to make a difference. That we should work together, we should be concerned about our children, and the parents, getting the parents involved, the teachers involved. I realized my undergraduate degree was in education, although I went into the corporate world. And one thing that we must understand is, teaching is a profession. We need to teach, uh, work with our teachers, so that we treat them as professionals. Then the parents, the teachers, and the students, and the community, they are the chain that calls for good education. We need to put that chain together, let it work together, and let it have strength. Because when one link is not strong enough, then we have problems. So, the reason I'm running is to make a difference in the school system, to work with everyone, all of the stakeholders, the board members, the superintendent, and research. Look at what's being done. What are the good things in the community that we see done? What are the things outside of our community that are working well? So, my idea, and my belief, and I put everything behind it. And those of you who know me, when I start on the job, I complete the job. I want to be the next school board member, so please, I want you to vote for Anne Pierre.
All right, I will begin with our five questions. These are the same questions we have asked at each debate. I'll read the questions. Do not hesitate to ask me to read it again if you need for me to read it again. "Our community is here tonight, and historically, there has been a deep disconnect between our elected officials and the experiences and needs of Hamilton County residents. How will you ensure, if you are elected, that you will be both transparent and accountable to Hamilton County community? And if you are an incumbent, how have you prioritized transparency and accountability in your tenure as an elected official?" And Mrs. Pierre, we'll start with you this time. And the question is, how will you ensure, if you are elected, that you will be both transparent and accountable to the Hamilton County community?
I believe that anytime you enter a profession, you enter any job that you are going to do, that whoever the stakeholders are, you should be transparent, you should provide information. Because it's a flow. You provide information, and they provide information to you. Because you must realize, you don't know everything. So, you need to ask questions. Ask questions from the students, from the teachers, and most of all, from the parents. In being transparent, that means that you have issues that happen within the school system, you have policies that you need to establish on the board. So, you should be there to be able to explain what you're doing and why you're doing it. Because a lot of times, people complain about things, and the reason they complain about them is because they do not understand. So, anytime that you work with a group of people, or you work with an individual, if you have a relationship with one individual, you must always have a good communication line. I know I've done it before. I've worked in corporate America, worked at the senior manager level. And to get anything done, you must be open with the things that are required, and you must be able to work with everyone to get things done. And most of all, you should be able to ask questions and receive information in a way that is, uh, that works for everyone. Uh, you could get information, but if you don't use that information properly, it does not do any good. So, I believe that transparency is one of the most important things, and working with people is also important.
We'll count time. Uh, you mentioned using that information. Part of the question was accountability, using that information. Anything you want to add to that?
We must always be accountable. Uh, when you take on a job, whatever you do, however you work through the process, accountability is required. You hold yourself accountable, but you also hold people accountable who are charged with carrying out the policies of the board. Anytime we've worked with individuals, someone might not understand what the policy is. So, the policies should be there, and people should thoroughly understand what the policy says and what the intention of the policy is.
Mrs. Mobley Jones, how have you prioritized transparency and accountability in your tenure as an elected official?
Currently in the role, I've made myself very accountable. And as it relates to accountability and transparency, I have made myself very accountable to my constituents, and they upheld me accountable. And if somebody feels like they have not, they upheld my feet to the fire. Um, and I've done that, I feel like with tenacity and perseverance to ensure that our kids are getting what they needed. And a lot of times, there are policies and there are things going on. And when there were things going on, such as the priority school situation, whether ASC was possibly going to come in, or we were going to lose our schools to the state, I held community meetings about that. I was available to community organizations when they held meetings to come and talk about those things. Um, as it related to the Woodmore tragedies, I was available. We had school meetings about that. I was accessible and accountable. Any superintendent, buyout, and everything that was going on with that, there was a level of accountability there, in which my vote showed what my constituents asked me to do, not what anybody else thought I should do, or even what I thought I should do, but what the constituents told me, and there was a level of accountability there, in which I was working to ensure that the students had what they needed, so why buy out a superintendent when we can use that money to go into our classrooms? Um, I have a cell phone that I pay a bill on every month that's completely dedicated to the constituents of District 5. I'm available 24 hours a day. I never cut that phone off, although my family probably wishes I do. Um, I never cut that phone off. I have emails, I'm on every piece of social media. I'm stopped in hair salons, church, the grocery store, the gas station, any type of public setting, I'm always there and available. And anybody that has actually interacted with me at any given point in time knows that if you come to me with a situation or a question, I do my best and my due diligence to either rectify that situation for you or find a common resolve. I've done that for four years, be it from a child calling me or emailing me about something, all the way to an elected official, or faith-based leader, or teacher, or principal, a peer. That's always there. As it relates to transparency, I don't think I can get any more transparent. Um, I'm very open and honest about what's going on. If somebody asks me, I'll tell you straight to the truth. And the people in central office, from the superintendent down, I'll call them, I'll text them, I'll email them, I'll show up in their offices to see what I can do to make sure, whatever the concern or the question is about the school, or the student, or the situation, is rectified. So, in that aspect, I've always been very transparent, very accountable to my constituents. I will continue to do that, because I represent them. I'm not working for myself. I'm working for the people of District 5 and the people here in Hamilton County, and that will always be my job.
At this time, Mrs. Pierre, you have an optional one minute, if you would like to respond to anything that was just said. And then you will also have an optional one minute. So, would you like one, would you like one minute to say anything else on that question? All right, we will move on to the second question. All right, this is a long one. I'll repeat the question when I get to it. "Unified Ed and Chattanooga 2.0 are both committed to ensuring equity for all of our young people in Hamilton County. Together, we define equity as all students reaching their full potential by ensuring they have access to the resources and supports that meet their individual needs. In practice, equity will show itself in our work, in the policies we support, the conditions we enable, the coalitions we mobilize, and the systems we seek to improve. We know one-third of our schools are schools of concentrated poverty, where 80% or more of the student body is eligible for free and reduced lunch. Additionally, given the large size of our district, we know that rural communities can also be isolated from city-centered resources and opportunities. Historically across the country and in our county, we have struggled to ensure racial and socioeconomic integration of our public schools, a strategy that research has shown to be effective for improving student outcomes." Here comes the question. "As a school board member, what specific strategies will you employ to ensure a plan is developed and implemented to fully integrate our public schools to ensure equity for all of our young people?" And Mrs. Mobley Jones, we'll start with you. The question again is, "As a school board member, what specific strategies will you employ to ensure a plan is developed and implemented to fully integrate our public schools to ensure equity for all of our young people?"
When I was elected to the school board in 2014, my very first school board retreat, they asked us what was a weakness in Hamilton County Department of Education. And I stated at that time to the other eight peers on the board that I felt a weakness in Hamilton County was the lack of equity. And the rest of them looked at me like they didn't know what I was talking about. And so, I then explained what I meant by equity, because for some, they feel like being equal is equitable, and it's not. Um, and so, since that, from that time, September of 2014, I have been a loud voice about ensuring that our schools are equitable. Um, we've had several administration changes, and so recently with our new superintendent, there have been some changes implemented, in which we now have an Office of Equity in the Department of Education, which we never had before. We also have a Chief Equity Officer in the Department of Education, which we've never had before. And there has now begun an equity task force, which is a conglomerate of community members and organizations that have come together in efforts to address what they have deemed down to three main issues that they're wanting to look at the inequities on, that would address a lot of the inequities going on in our schools. So, that's what's already taking place and what I've worked to advocate for. Going forward, we all know that in order to ensure equity, we have to look at bigger pictures. And our lack of equity in our academic arena is not necessarily an academic issue. It's a socioeconomic issue that connects to a lot of other governing entities. And so, you have to look at some things from a county commission standpoint, you have to look at things from the city council standpoint, and even from your state and federal government standpoint. Because the lack of economic mobility in our county is what is leading to our academic issues in our schools. Um, the kids only are a reflection of what they're coming from, the homes they're coming from, the neighborhoods they're coming out of, the environments they're coming out of. And so, I think in order to fully address that, you have to have some grassroots organizations and meetings going on. You have to be able to sit down with those people that are roots on the ground, your parents, your guardians, your custodians, the teachers, the governing bodies, your elected officials, community organizations, the NAACP, all the entities that can work together to do that. It's going to take some grassroots organization, because in order to truly integrate schools, it's not going to be the busing, it's not going to be the forced choice. It's going to be that we have to integrate our neighborhoods and our communities. And when you truly integrate neighborhoods and communities, and your schools become integrated, and it'll be by natural choice, and it'll be organic, and it won't seem forced, and we won't have all these conversations that are moot points and end up being discussed as busing, when that's really not the issue, it's an issue of race. And we really have that conversation, and I'm ready to talk about that.
Mrs. Pierre, "As a school board member, what specific strategies will you employ to ensure a plan is developed and implemented to fully integrate our public schools to ensure equity for all of our young people?"
I'm glad to see that the new superintendent came in and assessed some things that needed to be done in our school system. Um, I was, did attend some of the meetings that he had came to and spoke with the different people. And there were people in the audience who told him that we had issues in our community in reference to equity. Um, I realized though, that just putting that in place is going to take a while for people to get their hands and feet into the situation, to figure out what they actually need to do. So, as a school board member, I would work with the current, well, with the board, whatever board that we might have at the time. Um, I would work with the board, discuss with them the true meaning of equity, what it means to have an equitable situation. The issue that we have in Hamilton County, and we've had for a number of years, is that if you do not have the same amount of money as someone else, you're considered to not be able to learn as well. That's not true. I can say for myself, when I attended school, both my parents were, my mother was a domestic worker, and my father worked in a flour mill. But that did not mean that I could not learn. So, we need to, I would look at the student population, ask that studies be prepared such that we can see what the real situation is. And I realize that there are economic issues that we have. But you cannot just write someone off because they do not have money. I can see, when I see the little children in the neighborhood, I see that their brains are just running, they're ready to learn. But if they're not in a situation where they're given the tools that they need to have to learn, they will not learn. I think statistically, and I hate to say statistics and not quote and say it, but from zero to four are the years where you really need to get in and start working with your children. And we realize that what we need to do is to have a definite plan on equity, make sure that all of the schools are equitable, that you have good teachers, you have the resources that they need. When you do that, you have no problem with who wants to go to school A or school B, because it's then it's just a matter of what services that school is delivering and how the population wants to move ahead.
Mrs. Mobley Jones, you have one minute optional to respond to anything for rebuttal.
So, a lot of that that my opponent has mentioned is already coming into play with our new strategic plan that we implemented last September, and in our new fiscal budget that will start in 2018, 2019. There have been things put in place for us to begin this process, be it the community school model going into pretty much every opportunity zone. School in our district, which are the 12 schools, five of which we know are priorities, seven of which can soon become priority, if that was the case, that's already being put in place. We have, within the opportunity zone, we have special recruitment for that, to make sure we're getting teachers that we can retain and recruit that are going to be high-performing. We're already working on plans, like I said, the equity task force is dwindling that down to let us know what we need to address with the board, policy-wise, what we need to change. We know there are some inequities in special education, those are being addressed. So, a lot of the things that my opponent mentioned are already being put into place. We've met about it pretty much this entire school year at school board meetings and talked about these things. And when our strategic plan came out, those things were already shared with the public and put out into place. I just wanted to make sure that the community understands that that's already being in place.
Thank you. And Mrs. Pierre, you have one minute for an optional rebuttal or additional comment.
One thing I would like to say is that the school board is working to do certain things. I realize that. And as I said before, they're putting people in place. But I had an opportunity to go through the budget and to look at the superintendent's presentation. And I believe there's still room there to work on outcomes. Because you can have certain dollars, but if you don't have the outcomes to match the dollars, then you're going to have issues. So, I would work with whatever's being done now, thanking all of those people who have worked in the community to push the board and the superintendent to look at certain things as far as buildings and other things are concerned. Uh, but equity is one of the most important things that we have to look at. And I'm hoping that the people on the school board will work together to do those things.
Let me at this point remind the audience that you may ask your questions. There are cards going around, and someone will pick your questions up. So, if you have a question you want the candidates to answer, be sure to fill out a card. Question number three. "Only 42% of our kindergartners are coming to school ready to learn on day one. The rate of readiness is half that in schools of concentrated poverty. What are your thoughts on the role of early childhood education and expanding programs such as Camp K, uh, the Camp K pilot, that will support 300 rising kindergartners this summer in getting foundational skills to be successful in school?" So, the question again is, what are your thoughts on the role of early childhood education and expanding programs such as the Camp K pilot that will support 300 rising kindergartners this summer in getting foundational skills to be successful in school? And Mrs. Pierre, we'll start with you.
I think that the Camp K is wonderful to get the young people involved. Uh, also, early childhood education is very important. Uh, as I said, the four, zero to four are some of the most important years that you have. If we can put a thread through the system that we have, from the place where children are going to daycare, whether it's daycare in a small home, or daycare in a large setting, if we can put a thread through that and run that into the current system that we have, such that when the children come into the system, they have the skills that they need. I'm aware of several daycares in the city that have a very good program, so when the children come in. But have we ever put that thread in? Before I even saw Camp K, which as I say is a good idea, uh, in my, on my webpage, I put in information about the young people and what we need as far as early childhood development is concerned. Uh, now, we look at this, but we realize that Camp K is only taking care of 300 of the children. So, we need to have plans such that we go into the community and get support from businesses, individuals, that we can do this on a continuous basis. Because there will always be some children there who will not be able to get what they need, for whatever reason it is. But our responsibility is to educate the kids in Hamilton County. So, when you try to educate, then you must always have a plan. You need to have a model, so that the model doesn't stand alone, but it works in with the total system that you have. Uh, for early childhood, couldn't be more excited about it. Because the children now, for example, if you give a small kid your cell phone, by the time they finish with it, you won't even know what you have on it, because they'll make it dance and talk. So, it shows you that they are very smart, and we need to capture that part of their life such that they can learn the things that they need. So, when they enter school, they can be the children that we want them to be. They can be educated, they can do what they want to do in life.
Early childhood is very, education is very important, and that's really a passion of mine, deep in my heart. Uh, we know that if a child is educated early, this early learning, it sets the foundation that they need for anything they need to do in life, school, or career. for anything they need to do in life, school, or career-wise, it prepares them. Statistics do show that eighty percent of your brain development happens within the first three years of your life. So you want to make sure that children are prepared as they begin that step. As a member of the Early Matters Coalition of Chapter 2.0, I was on the team that was spearheading the Camp K project. And that was one of the things that we spoke a lot about is why our kids are behind. We know that, and I can say this, in District 5 and in District 4, a lot of our children enter kindergarten unprepared. They're not ready to learn when they get there. And that's because they have not had the exposure to early learning, be it from an in-home setting or a larger program scale. So the goal with Camp K was to take the funding that was available through the Smart Venture Fund where businesses had come together already and said, "We want to invest in our children, empower this program with the 300 students this year." And in hopes of, if it goes well, that we will run it again continuously. It'll be in 11 schools. I am proud to say that every elementary school in District 5 will have a Camp K program which puts our kids, I'm praying, that puts those kids that are in there on the trajectory that they need to be able to push forward, as well as their sister district in District 4 and even some of their sisters, sister schools in the opportunity zone. We know that in Hamilton County Department of Education, there is not actual funding for pre-K. And we have some board members that are adamant about not making that a part of the budget. And so there's a struggle there. But we do get that assistance from state and federal money as well as the Head Start programs that the city does. And then of course you have your private entities that provide that childcare. So I am a strong advocate for ensuring that a child gets there, be it from a faith-based community or from a, an actual business or if there is a grandmother or someone who is taking them into their home and they need childcare in their home. It is very instrumental in getting our kids prepared for where they need to be by the time they enter kindergarten so that our teachers are not having to struggle to play catch-up with them because that's what's happening. They're struggling to play catch-up with them by the time they get to kindergarten. If you get a kid, they're not a reading level in kindergarten or first grade. By the time they reach the third grade, they're already moving backwards. It's hard to play catch-up with that. And we see that in the middle school levels and we see that in the high schools as well. So I would work to, continue to work with the organization and the philanthropy, philanthropic entities in our city, businesses and whomever wants to fund early childhood education for our schools. And also I will continue to advocate at the school board level if we may be in a position for us to put in our budget because I do see the benefits of our programs that we do have already in Hamilton County and how we can expand those programs.
Thank you. Mrs. Pierre, you have one additional minute if you would like to make any further comments on early childhood education.
One thing we see about early childhood education is that Hamilton County has not been very good in doing what should be done for the children. As far as the board is concerned, I will hope that that will change. But in it, but depending on who's on the board, there are always ways that you can develop policies and procedures such that people then are responsible for doing certain things and their evaluation as far as the community is concerned. The community needs to speak out also. And this is one thing that I will do when I'm elected to the board, is to work with the community so the community will speak out.
Thank you. And Mrs. Mosley-Jones, if you have any additional comments? All right, reminder, audience, get your questions on those cards and someone from UNIFIA will be just looking for your hand coming around. In the past, there has not been a multi-year strategic plan that guided budget priorities or was directly linked to student outcomes. This means that each year, our community and schools face a zero-sum dynamic where access to limited resources are not made based on a long-term vision for our county schools, but rather based on a crisis framework that continues to happen annually. How are you, as a school board member, going to advocate for and help build out a multi-year strategic plan and budget that is open and accessible to our community and maintains an equity lens? And this one will go first to you, Mrs. Mosley-Jones.
Well, last September, when Dr. Johnson came in, that was the very first time that we had a board retreat in which we did begin a multi-year strategic plan. We started that process and this year with the fiscal budget in 2018, 2019, that budget matched that plan and our budget shows that how the goals of our districts of engagement, every child, every day, the teacher, best teachers, best leaders, all of that. It shows how the budget will reflect those priorities at a multi-year level. We were not able to do that this year because we were just getting started. The goal has been put in place to do that every year. We also looked at things such as zero-based budgeting. We also looked at things such as student-based budgeting, which we know that if you do student-based budgeting, then the schools where there is a lack of equity will then begin to have a more level playing field because you'll have to address the inequities at a greater rate and in a more intense rate than those schools that are not having those socioeconomic issues. So we're already doing those things, already in place for that. We are having a bit of a change of leadership because we're losing our financial, Chief Financial Officer and we are losing our previous Chief Financial Officer. There's one left and one is retiring. So we're going to have to get whoever's coming in on board with that and those have to join in because that's what we've decided as a board to do. But those things are already in place. But I do agree that we have not always done that. But everything takes time. We're in a place now where we have a leader and we have a cabinet and we have a board where everybody understands the need to do that. We have a commission who now understands that for the first time, we presented to the commission a balanced budget, actually with some income, with revenue, actually. So they didn't have to send it back and ask us for a balanced budget. We sent them a budget where we didn't need any money for them, but we showed them what we were able to do. And we're actually being able to meet a lot of needs by changing some things. We moved some things around. We've gotten rid of some positions. The retirement incentive brought in a mass level of income. So we've been able to meet needs and find ways to do that with our own money without having to ask for any money, without having to give any bonds for anything. We're being able to improve facilities, to improve curriculum and to offer greater opportunities to our children that will address the whole child, which will include the parent and the community and the child as well. So those things are in place. And my goal if re-elected or when re-elected will be to continue to push for those things to ensure that as we push for those things, the fields become, the fields for the children become more equitable and they're able to get what they need to have the best education and develop.
Thank you. Mrs. Pierre, how are you, as a school board member, going to advocate for and help build out a multi-year strategic plan and budget that is open and accessible to our community and maintains an equity lens?
One of the, one of my strong points working at the Tennessee Valley was the development of the budget. I was responsible for preparing the budget that went to Congress and to then be able to take that budget and measure the outcomes as to whether the budget was being met in terms of providing electricity to residents of Tennessee. One thing about zero-based budgeting, it came on the scene and everyone looked at it, but it's really is not totally as good as they try to make it seem. But when you look at a budget and a strategic plan, you should have measurable outcomes. One of the things that I saw when I looked at the budget and looked at the outcomes, they were not measurable outcomes. So I would work to, with the board, the superintendent and the community as well as the teachers, to have measurable outcomes because you can't expect the outcomes to be good unless everyone has an input into what's going on. And as far as equity is concerned, when you have a budget with measurable outcomes, it's blind as to whether or not everything will be treated fairly. So that's the good part about having a strategic plan as well as having a budget. Normally you have a budget that runs from one to five years and then your first two years are the years that you work with. And those then can be changed such that you always have a rolling five-year budget so that you know where you're going. And if something happens along the way, then you can make changes that are necessary such that everything comes in line. Budgeting is a funny crypt because not everybody will be on board with the budget. But then that means that you have to put things into that budget such that people can touch, they can understand. So I would be there to work with whomever to make sure that the budget and the strategic plan work hand in hand.
Thank you. Mrs. Mosley-Jones, you have an additional minute. And you have an additional minute as well as if there's anything else you need to say. All right, question number five, and then we'll get to those audience questions. Number five. Workforce development has become a hot topic across many organizations and businesses. What do you think about dual enrollment programs in school that teach a specific skill and lead to a credential? And we will start with Mrs. Pierre. What do you think about dual enrollment programs in school that teach a specific skill and lead to a credential?
There's information out there about dual enrollment programs. And first, let me say the bad part about it. When you have dual enrollment programs, you must have people who are committed to the program because at times the students do not receive the type input that they need for it to be successful. So there's, there are some little quirks out there that some of the people who are involved in dual programs bring forth. But a dual program is good. I can remember when I went to school, back, that there were some of the students who came to school for, until say around lunchtime and then they went out to work in somewhere else where they could develop a skill. I can remember talking to the young man at Kenton's Shoe Repair and he was saying he couldn't mind anybody who wanted to do shoe repair. So we have a lot, and that's just an example, but we have a lot of different businesses, not just the large ones, but we have some of the smaller businesses where if we had a plan, a model that really worked, we could get our students who were interested to work within a dual program. Now, a dual program is not limited to just a skill such as brick masoning and shoe repair. A dual program then would work in any area. And so that way you give a way for the students to look ahead and to see where they can go. And that is also helpful because sometimes not everyone is a reader and can map out a plan as to where they want to go. Some people need to have an example. And so if they have an example, I think that would help. And so as far as a dual program, that's just one tool in your toolbox. And I think you should use all of the tools to be able to help the students and to help our economy. It's, it's bad if you're trying to get to work and you don't have a car to get you there because you're in a low-income, a dead-end job. So I would like to see everybody who wants to be in the program to be able to get into a dual program.
Thank you. And Mrs. Mosley-Jones, what do you think about dual enrollment programs in school that teach a specific skill and lead to a credential?
Well, we know that everyone is not college material. I don't mean that in a negative way, but there are students who may not want to go for post-secondary education as it relates to a two-year or four-year university. But I do believe that every person in our community and in our world is trainable and can learn a skill that can make them productive in society. We currently in Hamilton County have CTE programs, which are Career Technical Education programs, formerly known as vocational education, in pretty much every high school that we have here. At this time, kicking off in the fall, we'll have the Future Ready Institutes that will start out, I believe, I think it's thirteen high schools now. I mean, it was eleven, but some other schools have come on board. Where each institute has two different focuses, or two different institutes within that main Future Ready Institute, which will allow our students access and the ability. Some of them actually have already signed up, the freshman, the incoming freshman class, if they were going to participate, they've already signed up to start that in the fall in various aspects from your traditional trades to your more trades in the modern-day world, trades that will give them jobs right here locally in Hamilton County. There's also awesome programs, I'm going to talk about one really quickly, at Howard, which is an District 5 school, but I think it's an awesome program that they have with the Lookout Mountain Conservatory. They do that, it sounds like a fire program, I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with fire, but that's where you go to school half the day and you work half the day. They have that program there. We also have the Volkswagen Academy. We have the Mechatronics Academy. Here, currently in District 5 at Brainerd, we have Cosmetology. We have Culinary Arts. We have Auto Mechanics, health-related sciences. And we used to have media, but we ran out of that money. But that's okay because we have some good things coming up in the fall for that with the Air Force. So we'll have the Institute of Radiation and the Institute of Forensic Sciences coming to Brainerd. And at Tyler, you also have an entity there. So their program's in place and I think it's great because kids are excited about it. They have a desire to learn and they want to do something different. Personal testimony, I have a young man in my family who went to Tyler. He was in the welding, the engineering program. Graduated from high school, told his mom he wasn't going to school. He was going to be a welder. He did it. He's 22 years old and makes big bucks and he's so excited about it. He knew from the beginning in 12th grade, he did not want to go to college. And his mom was like, "Yes, you are." And he was like, "No, I'm not." That's what he did and she's very proud of him. He has a working profession, is respectable, and he makes good money. He's able to afford that into their home. So we know that every child may not want to go for four-year or two-year institutions, but we know that we can teach them a skill and they are excited about it. They're signing up about it. The kids that were never excited about school are now excited about school because we have those programs in place. And my desire is for us to continue to grow those programs to give children access to what they need.
Thank you. And Mrs. Pierre, would you like to make any additional comments? You have one minute.
One thing we need to realize, and this again was talking to the superintendent who said he didn't realize how many programs were in Hamilton County schools. We, we can go back and remember that workforce development, we've had it here for years. I can remember Wanda Lee was the person, the workforce developer quote guru. But what we need to realize when we put these programs in place, we need to have them in place such that the parents and the community will know that the programs are there and we need to keep them working together. A lot of times, people just don't know it's available. So we need to, as far as public relations is concerned, we need to work on that avenue in, in the school and make sure that people know that. Because I agree, you can make good money doing the skill, but you can also have a skill and then later on, have that skill and then you want to go to college to be an engineer or in radiology, you know? So we can do all of those things.
Thank you. And Mrs. Mosley-Jones, do you have additional comments?
Sorry, I do want to make sure that I share this. I think that we did a great job on advertising what was on all of our Future Ready Institutes. It was on the news. It was in the newspaper. It was on radios, radio shows. There were, there were parent meetings so the parents were able to go. And I have several church members who work together in the youth group and they missed youth group one weekend, one Wednesday because they were going to hear about the Future Ready Institute. So I think we did a great job on publicizing that. And when I have coworkers and people come up to me and say, "Hey, my kid signed up for this or what is this about?" Because my kid came home and said, "I need to come to this meeting" because they were wanting to get involved. And I think we have a public engagement specialist and she works very hard. We have a communications director. She works very hard to get those things out there all across the world. Worst-case scenario, every Thursday we meet at 5:00, every Thursday we meet at 5:30 and we talk about these things as well. So there's always an opportunity there. And then there's all kinds of things and blast out on social media. So we have really worked hard to rectify what was wrong at first with communication and trying to make sure that people in the community know about those things.
Thank you. I notice we are right on time and we are going to transition now to the audience questions. And so what I'd like for you to do is give our candidates a round of applause so we can get a sip of water. Okay, so I'm going to start with the audience questions and give both candidates an opportunity to answer them. I keep hearing the current school board member- I keep hearing the current school board member being an advocate for equity, yet two peers have openly rejected the reality of our obvious segregation. How do you plan to fight pushback on integration? And we'll start with Mrs. Mosley-Jones.
So the question, why didn't you say something?
The question is, how do you plan to fight pushback on integration?
I have to laugh about this, only because this is a very sensitive subject for me. Clearly, somebody does not see the news on Thursday because that's when I had to fight, I had to fight and pushback. Pretty much everybody in Hamilton County knows that I am the only person of color on the school board. I am the only person that represents people of color. And so there are a lot of days when I fight back and push back with my board peers about things that they just don't get because they just don't look like me or come from communities that I have lived in or grown up in or worked with, children that look like me or any other person of color. And so I will continue to fight that fight. That is another thing that I am ashamed to do. My stance has remained the same, and it's been pretty much probably the same since I was a kid. I've always been outspoken, and I always had an opinion, and I believe in what is right. What is right is to be what is right by kids, and it doesn't matter what color you are. It is about what is right for you as a child, and for you to get the quality of education that you deserve. And so when people who have a wavering opinion from me on that say their opinion, I respect their opinion, but then I also show them why that is not morally right for children or economically sound for our county. And so when I have people direct statements to me, as they did on Thursday, about what schools lack equity, where are they, because they just didn't understand, I told them, come take a trip with me, and I'll take us to the neighborhoods where kids lack equity because that's what's going on, and that's what I face all the time as a school board member. That fight won't change for me, that is my fight. Those children's fight is my fight, your fight is my fight, and I'll continue to fight that, and I don't mind being the voice to fight that. The bigger concern I think should be is why people that don't look like me, that say they feel the same way I do, haven't said anything, are not fighting against that. That's what bothers me, and that's what troubles me, because I can stand up all day long, but I'm going to be polite because I look like the population that they're talking about. But when there are people that don't look like me, that say they believe what I believe and don't stand up, that's the bigger issue.
Thank you. And Mrs. Pierre, how do you plan to fight pushback on integration?
One way you can fight pushback on integration or equity, whichever one you want to use, is to look at the fact that twenty-six years ago, we had a lawsuit that the school board is bound by. So you need to go in and dust off some things and let people know that they are responsible for making sure that each student in the Hamilton County school system has an equitable chance at getting an education. Sometimes people don't see things because of the way you put it to them. And I would take the approach of pulling data and showing them. I can remember when that suit was dismissed in federal court, and at that time, it was said that you only needed to move one hundred and eighty-five teachers and that everything would be okey-dokey. Well, we see now that that is not the case. So we need to go in, pull out that information, and make people understand through various ways of talking with them and showing them how being in a community that's moving forward, looking at the industries that have come to this area, looking at the people we would like to get in this area, that you cannot do that if you're not treating everybody equally. And so that's how I would approach it.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Mrs. Mosley-Jones? Okay, and any additional comments? Many people blame the variances in student and school success on parent involvement. How would you propose to bringing equity to students whose parents and home life are not able or willing to provide it? And we will start with you, Mrs. Pierre.
We have to face the very real situation that we have issues in our community. We have a breakdown in family. Some of you out there can remember when, if you did not have a parent to help you, you possibly had a grandmother, an aunt, even a neighbor, or even a school teacher that was a neighbor of yours. So parent involvement is very important because the child spends more time at home than they do at school. And we have to realize that we need to develop a different type model to work with these parents. Now, one thing always bothers me is why you can require the parent to give eighteen to twenty hours every year at their school. Some schools, but not all schools, have this situation. So, and it's not necessarily the parents, you could have an aunt, a sister, or somebody else. But if the parent comes into the school and starts working with the school, they will see how important it is. We used to have a good PTA, our PTAs are not good any longer. But those are some avenues that we have. You know, we've had good things, but we sort of let them go by the way. And I say that because when you do that, you have a system where the system itself says, we're not going to worry about these parents who don't come. So when you say that, you don't worry about the students, and we know this exists. So we need to understand that you have an elephant under your seat, that's why you're falling out on the floor. And we need to talk about it, bring it out, talk about what's going on. And I'm glad that there are a lot of organizations in this community who are bringing this talk to the forefront. Now, some of them are being bashed for doing that, but we must have the subject, we must talk about the subject. If you want to hide everything, then we'll never do any better. But if you want this community to move ahead, then you must attack, bring about change, and do those things that are necessary, and it's not just parents, it's the community. The community needs to help.
Thank you. Mrs. Mosley-Jones, how would you propose bringing equity to students whose parents and home life are not able or willing to provide it?
Ways in which I see that already happening, and that I've been taken advantage of, is that I believe in the village concept. I was a kid raised in a big old village, had a lot of the village members. And what we know now is that our children, they are, I don't want to say victims because they're not, but they're just, they have situations that they come from that are not always the best. And so we have a parent problem, and we know that. And we have some great parents, don't get me wrong, we have some excellent parents. We have some parents that want to, but just don't have the means to, and then we have some that really just don't do it, that's just the truth. But in the meantime, we have community members, we have teachers, we have faith-based organizations, we have community organizations, we have the YFDCs, there's so many people that have become villagers for our children. We have community PTAs that are now coming up because PTAs and PTSAs were vibrant. I know even when I was growing up in this school, we had a PTSA, and there were PTAs in other schools. As those have died down, there are some members of the PTAs that actually take on several different PTAs. I know there's a couple of people that they're actually over at Woodmore, they work at Woodmore's PTA, Delwood's PTA, and they work at Brainerd's PTA, and they work the whole Hamilton County PTA. There are community members and businesses that have come together and created a community PTSA where they encompass several schools. I know Archronide Elementary has that, I know Archronide Middle has that, and it's done great, and those individuals take on the task and the roles that the parents are not able to fill at that time. I know in our district, currently in District Five, we're working to do that with Brainerd and Delwood and Woodmore because we do realize that oftentimes the actual biological parent can't be there, but it doesn't mean that someone else can't be there to support them. Myself and some of my friends, we've taken on some high school roles, and we help them get ready for prom, we help them get ready for the ACTs, whatever we can do, we take them to church, we take them to work. There's a young lady, she's in the Step Up Program, we help her get back and forth to the Step Up Program this summer because she got into the program, she needs to get this, we take her and we get her there. So the thing is, is that it takes all of us, and it is a matter of the community not saying, oh, those kids, those kids, those kids are our kids. And we have a problem, and I, this is a soapbox for me, people that look like me in my community, we have a problem with saying, those kids. Well, those kids are our kids, and but by the grace of God, it could have been us. So instead of saying, those kids, then take the time and get one of those kids and make them your kid and do what they need to do, because all they want is someone. It doesn't, I mean, I had a young lady tell me, well, it ain't even got to be my mom. Like, I just need somebody. And so all they need is somebody, and once you become that somebody for them, you're able to make the difference. And there are various ways, like I say, to do that. The community PTAs are just being that surrogate person or mentorship alive.
And Mrs. Pierre, do you have any additional comments?
Well, I worked last year with the Woodmore PTA. And when I worked with Woodmore PTA, the person who was the president of the PTA had grandkids, but grandkids had graduated from school and college, but he could not get anybody to work with him. I went to one PTA meeting, the meeting we actually had, and there were two parents there. But I worked with those two parents to help them understand how we were going to do a teacher appreciation luncheon. So we worked together, we got the teacher appreciation luncheon done, we fed all the teachers and the staff at Woodmore. So working together does make a difference, and we need to make a difference together. And when we do that, we will have a situation that makes our community a better community.
Thank you. And any additional comments, Mrs. Mosley-Jones? Okay, so here's a prior prayer, I wish you all had announced, I got my doctorate, I'm struggling with one word on this one. I think I've got it. What can you, as a school board member, do to enhance the coordination between the county and the city in regards to education and HCD-E? And please be specific. Close? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to read it with confidence. So what can you, what can you, as a school board member, do to enhance the coordination between the city and the county in regards to education and HCD-E? And please be specific. And we'll start with Mrs. Mosley-Jones.
So, I currently sit on a team for this already with HCD-E and the City of Chattanooga. We've had, I think it's two meetings now, I could be wrong, maybe one and a second, two meetings, I think it's been two meetings. We have a third that's coming up. But we are working with ways in which we can figure out what each governing entity can do to support each other. We are two separate entities, we know that the city went out of the school business. That's what everybody says, I thought we merged, but we never really merged, so the city went out of the school business. And so they don't have an obligation to fund our public schools at all. The sole obligation to fund our schools lies in the county, state, and federal money. So we are working with ways in which, like, I'll give an example, with the implementation of the community schools models and the opportunities on the schools, there are, if anyone's not familiar with community school models, it's where the school becomes like a community center. And so that's one way. You can also address the parent engagement and involvement by equipping the parent what they need, but that's a side note. The school becomes a community center, and so we look at ways in which the city could support that with the services that they have, as well as what we need from Hamilton County and what the city, those entities in Hamilton County and Chattanooga City have connected to the city government, how we can all work together and take all of those programs and organizations and fulfill the needs in the community schools. One example of that is with Camp K. We know that the City of Chattanooga has the YFDC summer camps, and so what we're looking at is how we can get the kids that will be going to summer camp into Camp K as well. So that's a dual thing, so they go to Camp K in the morning, they go to the YFDC in the afternoon, the kid's covered for eight hours, the mom or grandma, whomever can go to work, and the need is being made. Also, we have the Ready to Read program that's going to be happening this summer, and we've also talked about how we can, once again, correlate with those various summer camps. And the YFDC talked about how they will be able to provide transportation back and forth because that's something that we don't have in HCD-E. So there are a lot of ways currently that we are working to do that, and we will continue to look at ways to do that. Also, with juvenile court, we're looking at some things that we can do with our students that have shoring issues or that are having behavioral issues that have gotten to the juvenile court level, how we can work together to meet those needs, you know, Hamilton County Department of Education.
Thank you. And Mrs. Pierre, what can you, as a school board member, do to enhance the coordination between the county and the city in regards to education and HCD-E? And please be specific.
I would try to be specific. One way that we can work with the city, we must realize, even though the city went out of the school business, we must realize that a large number of the students that we have live in the city. And so we pay city tax and we pay county tax. So there are issues that we have in our inner-city schools that we might not have in other schools. So one specific way that we could work is for the city to take on some programs and working in the city such that those, and now this is just one issue, you said be specific, so I'll just use one. One issue is, we have children who get in trouble in our schools, but the children live in the city. So what happens is that they are normally put out of school, and that's another issue, side issue, didn't ask that. But we can have the city to take on some of those responsibilities of the children who are having issues in the school. Now, I know that there is a group of people who say we shouldn't spend city money on schools, but you must realize that the residents in the city are in the schools. So when you walked away from the schools, it caused a big problem, it caused a divide between how much money is allocated to the county based on the county taking all of the costs. So developing programs that would work, the ones that they have, coordinating those, any action, and I want to say one thing again, that I am happy that we have people in this community who have come out, put a stake in the ground, and said, we're going to stop the sliding of the schools in this county, because when you look at a school, that school represents you. So I think more coordination with the city and the county in realizing that the students represent Chattanooga as well as Hamilton County.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Mrs. Mosley-Jones? Any additional comments? Okay, we'll start with you, Mrs. Pierre. What are your thoughts on making pre-K mandatory?
I think pre-K should be mandatory. I realize that there is a funding problem there, but I think pre-K should be mandatory. As we've stated before, if the children do not have the skills they need, then the teacher has to teach one set of kids in one way and the other in another way. So if pre-K is mandatory and funded, then we have made a big step ahead. Also, when we look at pre-K, we must realize that we have a different set of children coming into pre-K. These kids are very adept to what's going on in the world. They are far ahead of children maybe five years ago, and you know, that's been proven. So we need to make pre-K mandatory. We would have to probably get state involved in that, but it is something that is needed, and it's one of the things that's so important in getting that early start and that early intervention into the lives of the children.
Thank you. Mrs. Mrs. Mosley-Jones, what are your thoughts on making pre-K mandatory?
Well, I would love for schools to be pre-K mandatory. However, I do know that there is a funding issue with that, and there would have to be a lot of lobbying at the state Board of Education level, and even at our federal level, because you'd have to find funding for that. And the only way that it would become mandatory or set in Hamilton County is if we had the funding for it, because there's no other way to pay for it if you don't have the funding for that. So, I'd love to see it. I'm a strong advocate for early childhood education, as I said earlier. Feel like it does a great benefit to children. However, I know that that would have to come from a higher decision-making bodies than ourselves, you know, in Hamilton County. I mean, we could ask for it all day long, but if the state doesn't fund it, we wouldn't have it just as a state mandate for us to do things, and then they don't fund it. So, you know, that's the catching trick when it comes to the state Board of Education. There are points that were elected, so there's a level of responsibility and obligation at the state level that we don't, it's different. We're obligated to you all as our constituents, they're obligated to whoever appointed them. So, they make decisions based off of that, not what's best for our kids sometimes.
Thank you. Any other comments on mandatory pre-K?
Well, yeah. There is one thing that we need to realize, that our constitution gives education to the states, and the states are responsible. So, we're all citizens of this state, so we need to begin lobbying the state for things that you know are beneficial. You know, we have money that we come in, we have, we have the lotteries, we have a lot of money that comes in. This past budget for the state was a budget where they had money left over. But the state is responsible. That's why the state can come in and take your schools over, because the state is responsible for education. So, we should make them live up to that responsibility.
Thank you. Any other comments? This school, Dalewood Middle School, my alma mater, this school, Dalewood Middle School is one of the lowest-scoring and funded schools in the county. What are you going to do to help find funding for these students? And we will start with Ms. Mosley-Jones.
So, I want to take a point of interest and privilege and harass on Dalewood Middle School. Actually, Dalewood Middle School, out of the five priority schools, would have been one of the schools that probably would have fell off the list. Dalewood has made those great strides and improved in that aspect. They're doing well. They have a lot of exposure to things here, and recently they had a BWD lab, adding several other things going on. They're also getting additional money and funding as they are in opportunities on school, and so, there's additional monies and supports that are coming in from that, that aspect as well. They're able to write grants to get more money, so there's another avenue we're able to give for that. Of course, my vote for the budget this year enhanced their opportunities and access to some things they normally would not have had as well. And I will continue to do that, and continue to advocate and ask for things. I know personally, a lot of times when there have been needs at the schools in District Five, because of my relationships with businesses and community organizations and community leaders, I am able to find ways to meet those needs from a community standpoint, be it through a foundation or a business of some sorts. I was able to build a relationship with CBL. Everybody knows who CBL is, and they have adopted the schools in District Five, and so there's sometimes ways that these are met that way. I think there are several funds that have been able to donate to Dalewood, and then of course you have the money that we budgeted from Hamilton County Department of Education. You have the title money that they did, and you also have the grant money that you're getting as an opportunity to own the school. And any other way that I could find this money, I will do that as well. I get on Facebook and beg for money. People know need for that. I don't mind doing that at all because I want my kids to have what they need, and if that means asking my friends and my family or people in Facebook land or wherever, I will do that. Because if you truly believe in kids, and like you say you do, then sometimes put your money where your mouth is. And I can't say that the community does step up and does, and they do that when I ask that of them. So, I will continue to find every avenue that I know to advocate and do that for. There are some funds coming up in the future that will be dedicated to District Five, and so that's another way that we will be working to ensure that our schools have what they need.
Thank you. And Ms. Pierre, Dalewood question, what are you going to do to help find funding for these students?
Well, the first thing that you do in terms of funding, we will go back to the budget question and the requirements and the needs. If we're not giving enough funds to meet the needs for the students, then equity doesn't exist, because we have to realize that budget equals equity. And so, if we do not fund properly, then they cannot do what they need to do. And you know, I can't go into great details, timekeeper is always there. But I would work such, again, with the budget, so that we make sure, for example, if you have one school that does not need certain things, then you should then work such that the goals can be met in a certain way. Now, when you come to a school and they're not meeting their goals, then that's when your budget comes in, your strategic plan. You measure your outcomes, and you make a decision as to what you need. Now, the dirty word is increasing taxes. But at some point in time, if you want these things to happen, if you want to educate your children, at some point you will have to increase taxes. You can ask people for money, you can get money from corporations. There are a lot of grants out there the federal government has that you can get for specific circumstances. But as far as the overall education is concerned, you must do it on a budget and an equity basis. If I need a pair of shoes and you give me a blouse, then that's not doing me any good. So, that's when I'm saying, "Measure outcomes." You have to measure what outcome is needed, and then you have to fund it such that you can reach the outcome where money takes precedent over that. But sometimes relationships are important also, in making sure that certain things happen.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Ms. Mosley-Jones?
The biggest issue, and I want to share this with the community, is that when we talk about the lack of equity and funding, that starts at the state level. First of all, the basic education program, which is the BEP formula that the state funds all schools in the state of Tennessee, is not available. It's not available. First, it's based off of crazy formulas that does not equate to what we have to have here in Hamilton County, because we here in Hamilton County, the board actually pays for 500 additional teachers over what, what the state tells us we're supposed to have. If we put a teacher in a classroom based on what the state told us we're supposed to have, we'd be in a bad place. So, we're already paying for things that the state has told us we have to do, but they don't give us the money for, because they have this crazy formula called the BEP. So, that's where the lack of equity starts. Then we try to play catch-up here in Hamilton County, based on the funds that we're able to get from tax dollars and our federal funding and the money that we get from state taxes and, you know, all those little money taxes that we get. I know my time is up. Can I please say this one more thing? We have to understand why, where that starts. It starts from the top of the state and not to us. We would love to make sure everybody has what we need, and we try our best to do that, but it starts at the BEP formula.
Okay. And any additional comments, Ms. Pierre?
We must realize that the BEP formula is the way it is because the smaller counties sued the state and told the state, "Okay, you're not giving us the amount of money that we need." So, that being said, and the state is responsible for education, we're going to get as much as we can from the state. But then it still comes down to all of you out there being willing to put your money where you put your mouth and say, "We are going to lobby the school board, we're going to lobby the county, we're going to go to the federal government, wherever we need to go, because we need the money that is necessary to fund our budget such that we do have equity." You're always going to have issues with people, because everybody wants money from the state. But we need to work toward taking care of ourselves and realizing what we need, and making sure that the money that we have, that we're spending it efficiently, such that we have effective education.
Thank you. That is the last of our questions, but I'm sure if you think of a burning question on the way home, both of our candidates would be happy to have you contact them. We are going to end this evening with a final comment from each candidate, and we will start with Mrs. Pierre.
The reason that I'm running is because I feel like, and I will not only feel like, I know that there is a better way to do what we're doing in terms of education. You know, I've just sighed. I had a lot of time to think about this. Had a torn meniscus, so I was kind of sitting there having to think about things. And I thought about all of the children who are going to school and the things that they don't have and not knowing what they need themselves, because that's left to the adults. So, we can't blame the children. We need to step up as adults. So, I decided I would step up and take the experience that I have had over these years and work to better the education system in Hamilton County. And then I was standing in the court when they had the school bus trial, and I was standing in court and raised my hand, I had to testify because I was behind the bus that they had wrecked. And when I did that, I looked into that young man's eyes, and I saw the sorrow in his eyes because he didn't mean to do what he did. But anytime you put a 25-year-old in a bus with 37, 40 kids in the bus, then you're going to have problems. We need to make sure that everything that we do in this community is the best thing that we can do for our children.
Thank you. Mosley-Jones.
Well, we, I've heard from my attorney that she would like to do a collective for school board, but I am currently in the role, and I know what I have done, and you all know what I have done, and I can tell you what I will continue to do. One thing that I find to be great accomplishment and proof of what I will do is that I will stand up for what is right, and what's right by our kids. And that was when I stood up and fought to keep our schools from state takeover. And that was the biggest, one of the biggest equity issues I think we could look at is that they were coming to take five predominantly African-American schools. And I stood with that fight. A lot of times when people fell off the wagon that they got on, and left me there by myself. And so, I want to let people, remind people that I will fight for what is right with our kids. I am currently in the role, so I am more abreast to what is actually going on and happening, and what the limitations are, and what we can do to change those policies and to work harder to increase access for our children. I ask that you remember that, remember the work that I have done, and put your faith back into, back into me, that I will continue to work and fight for the children here in District Five and in Hamilton County, because I believe that the most critical thing that we can do to change the lives of our children is to improve their educational opportunities.
Thank you. As, as Never comes up, I'm going to say, I have three reasons to feel very hopeful about District Five. Two of them are on this stage, and the third is the fact that this number of people showed up tonight to hear them speak. This, this is an incredible group. So, thank you so much. Be sure to go. Thank you, Never.
Okay, folks, we have just a quick film recording that will be on Facebook by the end of the evening tonight. We do have a professional videographer back here. It'll take us a few days to get that edited, and then we'll have that on Facebook and YouTube, also posted to the website, schoolboarddebates.com. You can go there and see all the debate videos. So, this concludes the 2018 School Board Candidate Debates. Thank you to our candidates and our moderator, and thank you all for being here.
Awesome. You should have a...